That was a test. We got one minute to go. It'll start at six o'clock precisely. Got it. We're good. I'm sorry, seven. See, I've been...
I know, they've been working on it for months.
If it's six o'clock, we're an hour late. All right, at seven o'clock. Ready? Call the meeting to order. Let the record show, this is a duly authorized meeting of the T K City Council, held on December 16th, 2018. With all... 2018?
January?
Did I say December? January eight... 16th, 2018.
You're there.
See, I was more worried about the 17 than I was the December-January. I thought for sure I'd say 17. With all members present, except for one who hasn't been elected yet. The press has been duly notified. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council will remain standing. If you desire to join us, please remember the four York County officers that were shot yesterday. Amen. Please be seated. Now, excuse my glasses, but I'm 60 years old and I have to have these to read. Okay, item number one is a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission. You can take it away at your will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll call to order the public hearing regarding an amendment to the zoning code, Article 8, Section 19-401, fences in residential and park districts. And Susan, if you would give us an executive summary of that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The changes to Section 19-401 are maximum fence height will go from five feet to six feet. Fences on top of berms or walls will not exceed the maximum height that would apply to a fence or a wall alone. In the case of retaining walls, a minimum four-foot fence may be constructed on top of the wall for safety. For vertical picket fences, no more than three and a quarter inches shall be the distance between the pickets. For horizontal split rail fences, the top rail should not be higher than 72 inches above grade. Privacy fences will be permitted but shall not have an unfinished side facing outward from the property. No fence or wall shall be installed in such a manner as to block or divert drainage flow onto or off of any other land. The other regulations remain intact, including prohibition on fences in front yards.
Thank you, Susan. Is there a public comment? I know there's at least one person that I saw signed up. And if you would approach the podium and state your name and address?
Sure. My name is Barbie Staples and I live in T K at 940 Nob Creek Lane. Good evening, Mayor O'Neil, City Council members, Planning Commission members, city staff, and anyone else who is present or watching this meeting on TV. I am here this evening as a resident because I am concerned about the recommendation that the Planning Commission is making to City Council that we change the fence ordinance to allow privacy fences. And that includes privacy fences up to six feet. It's not a short joke. I have asked a lot of questions about how this change came into discussion and it appears that the changes are being made because one resident wanted to put a privacy fence around their swimming pool and it is currently not permitted in our ordinance. Also, it was not about the height of the fence, but was about the distance between the pickets. Stuart and I lived on the lake more than 17 years until we moved to Callaway three months ago. One of my most favorite views was sitting down at our pool level and I could see boats going up and down Lake Wiley. It is a beautiful view that could be ruined. If the neighbor on the right side of that home decided to put up a privacy fence, that view would be ruined. I am sure there are a lot of lakefront homes in T K that would have the same issues. Additionally, because of the stacked lots in T K, there are many homes that have water views but are not waterfront. If residents are allowed to put up a six-foot privacy fence, those residents could also have their views blocked or restricted. And there's a good chance that they paid more for their homes because of that beautiful water view. We lived in Austin, Texas several years ago and six-foot private or stockade fences are allowed. They look awful after a few years and need repair and many just sit there looking awful. It does not add to the value of the property or those properties in the area. Please do not approve privacy fences in T K on a regular basis. If someone wants that type of fence, let them apply for a variance stating their needs for that type of fence and assuring that the surrounding neighbors would not be affected. Or get approval from the neighbors that they do not mind. I think a lot more consideration needs to be brought to the table and how it will affect neighbors and their homes and/or the values of residential properties in T K. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbie.
Thank you, Barbie. Any other public comment input? All right. State your name and address.
My name is... My name is Jason Dayton and I'm at 369 Shoreline Parkway. I am the resident that had the issue that brought this up in the first place. And in many respects, the previous speaker is correct. This was not about fence height initially for me and it was about the spacing of the pickets. The reason I brought it forward in the first place was a safety concern. We had a pool installed. We wanted to have a fence built to the codes, National Safety Codes for pool and spa. And T K at that time and currently did not allow us to bring the pickets in as close as we would like. So I requested at that time that the width of the pickets be changed. The reasoning is, the current guideline is they must be three and a quarter inches apart. That distance allows for someone to put their foot in between the pickets and climb the fence, which is what we want to avoid because that's a safety issue for somebody with a pool. So really, I understand the concerns around appearance. I do. But I would consider safety to be a more paramount concern than the appearance in this matter.
Thank you, Jason. Any other public input, comments? Then we'll close the public comment period. Mr. Mayor, members of council, questions, comments?
Anybody on council have any questions?
Sure. Just real quick, because that kind of shared Barbie's concern. Alicia and I were discussing it briefly prior to starting the meeting. This had kind of started us to kind of fall in line with the National Fencing Code or what's it called?
The International Pool and Spa Code, yes.
That's the reason we started reviewing this. Is there any verbiage that could require a minimum? Because it says no more than three and a quarter inches. In this verbiage on what we're changing, does it allow them to be flush, butted up against one another to have zero visibility? Is that what this is suggesting?
Let's get Susan Britt, if you can come back up to the podium to answer council's questions on this.
Just to provide some background. Previously, our code says that no less than three and one quarter inches between the pickets to allow visibility. The International Swimming Pool and Spa Safety Code, which by the way, we have not adopted, states that no more than four inches that would allow any material to be passed through or for our children's feet to go through. So it's a matter of interpretation, but that's what started a lot of this discussion. And so the Planning Commission did a great deal of research in looking at other jurisdictions and what they allow around us. In our surrounding jurisdictions, we're the only ones that prohibit privacy fences. So if that were the case and you wanted to look at allowing that, the Planning Commission came forward with some of these recommendations. That's why the language was changed to say no more than three and a quarter inches because that would affect the safety with something being able to be passed through the fences. I did, for previous councils, send out photos that showed what the different types of fences looked like. So you should have that information. In the past, we have allowed shadow box fences, which basically allows the visibility between the pickets but gives the perception of privacy. So you would still have some of those few issues even with the shadow box fence. I'll be glad to answer any other questions or perhaps Mr. Leonard.
Susan, I have a quick question. Go ahead. What was the background to raise it from the five to the six-feet mark?
Because the five feet is really more easily accessible. You can scale that fence quite easily. Animals, small children, whereas the six-foot actually is a little more difficult. Especially when you have the bottom bracing up higher, they can't reach and get a good hold. So that was part of the reasoning for that.
And then my understanding is that most of the newer developments, I should say, have HOAs or restrictions still prohibiting or that they have to go through some kind of process to even get to that point?
That's correct. If there's a prohibition on privacy fences, the HOA generally would have that stated in their restricted covenants. And most of our HOAs do also have architectural reviews, so it has to go through them before it comes to us. This would primarily affect the peninsula areas.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, what are the... Excuse me. Go ahead.
How many requests have we had? How many requests have come in for us to change the code to allow privacy fences?
We actually have had many requests over the years for privacy fences and we have to tell them it's not permitted. Now, I know that I have looked at about five recently and have told them, if you want to wait, wait because this is coming before council for consideration. Otherwise, if you want to move forward on a fence, now we cannot permit a privacy fence.
So would you say roughly like five a year or is that like 100 a year?
More like 10 to 15.
Just trying to get a sense of how big of an issue this is.
Susan, what type of fence is currently being used by the majority of homeowners with pools now?
Shadow box fences.
Shadow box.
The shadow box fences still keeps the three and a quarter pickets, but they're kind of a zigzag. So you have a fence behind a fence. You still have the visibility in between the pickets, but it gives that perception of privacy.
So was that the biggest issue? Was it a privacy issue?
And it is an added cost to the homeowner, of course.
Is there anything in the code that says, well, would there be, Chris, that it might have something to do with the neighbors? If the neighbors say it's okay, it would be okay or?
There's nothing currently in the ordinance that...
Because that would even follow if they sold the house?
At your will or getting concurrent...
It would have to go through a variance through the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's the only legal way.
And that's the $300 fee?
$350.
Win or lose, $350.
And of course, they would have to have justifiable hardship.
And that's as it's written now, though?
Pardon?
That's as it's written now?
As the code is currently. If they wanted a privacy fence, they would have to go through a variance procedure.
Just to me, it seems without putting any type of minimum spacing, it's... And again, not everybody has $5,000 to spend on a shadow box fence or whatever, but it seems the way it's written here, it almost encourages your do-it-yourselfer, which I am, you know, but to go buy panels from Lowe's and zigzag them through your yard as you see fit. What prevents, I guess, what prevents citizens of T K from necessarily not being qualified to install a fence, whether to dig the hole or run it level?
They could do their own fence, except currently you couldn't buy solid panels to do it. You would have to do a vertical, if you wanted to do a picket, it would be a vertical picket and you'd have to have three and a quarter inches between the pickets. The way the code is now.
The way it is now.
I... Sorry.
No, but just previously with the issue with the pool, so it was... But as it's written now, at three and... Oh, it's three and a quarter, not three-quarter of an inch. Okay.
Yes, three and a quarter inches.
I got you. He wanted something smaller.
About that wide.
Because that's my concern is not, it's just, I don't want to say giving everyone access because everybody needs to have the right to protect their privacy and do what they want. But I think more of that shadow box with more lenient restrictions on the width of the spaces between the pickets versus, you know, Dave's neighbor goes, put up panels that you buy from Lowe's for 30 bucks a pop and blocks the view of his azaleas, then he'll be crying all spring. But access is good, the ability to do it is good, but do you want the... What keeps someone from not doing it to the level that we expect now?
Even if you're doing it yourself, you can't go out and install a fence without getting the fence permit, which then would trigger an inspection to come out and look at it. So if somebody were to go out and start installing a privacy fence without a permit, would we know about it? Probably not unless somebody came in, unless we got complaints from neighbors or happened to see it as we were looking at other things, which does happen more frequently than you would think. So at that point, they got to stop working, they've got to get a permit, and then they got to put the fence into compliance. You know, whether it's... Whether you're reducing the width of the gaps or going straight privacy or whatnot. Yeah, I think Planning Commission listened to prior comments, discussions from the previous council and I think that's what has been brought back now. Yeah, it sounds like, yeah, and I don't want to put words in council's mouth, but if council's interested in maybe workshopping this a little further and discussing additional ideas or maybe giving some specific direction to Planning Commission for consideration. Just as a...
Chris, are you prepared to make a recommendation tonight?
I think we are and I would just follow up on all of that. Two other things that were part of our primary considerations. One is by creating or allowing privacy fences now, because we currently allow shadow boxes, you already have privacy fences in effect. Those are privacy fences because you cannot see through them. We also tried to re-baseline ourselves against some of our benchmark communities, which tend to be the adjacent communities. And by looking at a broad swath of those, their fence heights, I think, are all six feet or higher and most of them allow privacy. And so it's one of the things that we were looking at is how do we make ourselves consistent more with the benchmark communities? Because we felt we already effectively have privacy fences or the effective privacy fences through the shadow box that could come into play.
Question?
Certainly, though, if you have some specific things you want us to go back and look at, we certainly can do that.
So the benchmark communities that you looked at, did they happen to be like recreational lake communities?
Some do, right? So some are York County.
Or were they mainly...
Some are York County, Rock Hill, Fort Mill are the ones we tend to look at. And then we kind of go outside the area a little bit and look at more of the communities that I guess we kind of fashion ourselves off.
Such as like Hilton Head or not pleasant?
Hilton Head and Bluffton and places like that. So we kind of get a mix of both of those. But we always look at the ones that are adjacent, especially the ones that are on the lake. But certainly, if there's some specific direction that you want us to go look at, from our perspective, there's not a great, there's no immediate sense of urgency because I think all the situations that need to be handled are in hand. So if we needed to roll this again, we can do that.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Okay. My other question is just in regards to, if we were to go ahead and vote to approve this, are there any restrictions in terms of color? Because I see that there's, the code specifies like vinyl, wood, et cetera, but when you have, you know, a big wall fence, you know, you have more opportunities to be creative. And so I guess just my question is, is there any concern about that or... Maybe I missed it. Maybe there is something in there in terms of color.
Yeah, there's, it's not something that we specifically looked at because generally the fencing that is a mass-produced market is not an offensive color. It's either treated wood or black or white vinyl pickets. But if that's something that the council would like the Planning Commission to look at, as Chris said, I'm sure that they would consider that.
Yeah, about the only thing that the current ordinance says is it does talk to materials. And the only thing that it really talks to is related to color is you can put a clear preservative on any wood fence. So it's implied that you can't paint it if you would, right? But there's no specific prohibition on color if you go find a pink vinyl fence someplace or anything like that.
So I see it says privacy fence must be unfinished side facing outward. So a finish would be a paint or something like that, right?
The unfinished side can't be facing outward.
Oh, can't be facing outward. I got you.
Right, it has to be facing inward.
I see, okay.
So you see it is the smooth side.
I understand. I was just looking wrong.
So if someone wanted to paint, like if it was a wooden fence and they wanted to paint one piece of wood black and then the next one white and then the next one black and... And I mean, I'm just trying to think like...
Nothing that prohibits that.
Okay, if we say this is okay, let's just think about what all that could mean or include. And I don't see anything that would prohibit that. Not... I mean, I don't know, but...
And, you know, currently it's not prohibited either. So if they wanted to, you know, put up a vinyl fence that they wanted to, you know, or a wooden fence where they wanted to paint one post blue and one post red, they could... There's nothing to prohibit it at this point either. But that is a valid concern.
Any other questions? Okay, Chris, no other questions.
Okay, so are you going to give us some specific guidance beyond what we've received here?
No.
Okay.
I think if you've got a recommendation to make, I'm willing to listen to your recommendation.
All right, fair enough. All right, then I will close the public hearing. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You guys, there you go. So your recommendation is already in the packet? Don't come back. No, you're going to come back. Okay, got you. Got you. Okay, let's go to item number two A, Office Cole, York County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Office Cole. I am actually a resident as well of T K, 1163 Molokai Drive. And if we're talking about color, I have a neighbor who has a Tar Hill blue on his post that just drives me crazy. Every morning I pull out my driveway, but that's another topic for another day or another council meeting. But no, I wanted to thank, first of all, appreciate Charlie for getting me on the agenda this evening and Merrily, and congratulations to all the council members for being appointed and elected to the city of T K. But I'm here for representing the Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitors Bureau, also known as York County, Visit York County. In front of you, you have several handouts. We have a relocation guide. We'll kind of go through them fairly quickly. Tear-off map that our office has worked with with the city on some points of interest for the city. Fairways of York County, which of course, the golf club is highlighted in there and of course, our visitors guide. About us, you know, we are a designated tourism agency on behalf of York County. We operate on behalf of the county in regards to recruiting and selling, promoting and marketing all of York County and in this case specifically, T K, South Carolina. This is our staff. We are mighty staff of seven, six full-time and one part-time. I will be remiss to say he'll be joining you surely on another presentation, but we have hired a new executive director. That is Billy Dunlap. He is originally from the area. He actually just moved from Lawrence. And I believe Charlie, I believe Billy said he actually knows you quite well, so you guys go way back. I won't tell none of the stories. Yeah, I won't tell any of those stories or not. But we're excited to have Billy on board and progressing our tourism industry even further as we have now. Now, Charlie, are these... Do we have sound on this? If I click this? Don't worry about it, it's fine. What I'll do is I'll provide some email links for council members and for the mayor. We have several promotional videos that we do send out to prospective businesses and event planners when we're trying to recruit to bring events to the area. So this is one of the videos. We have a YouTube channel. It's Visit York County. But again, I'll provide those links for you guys and these are just kind of feel-good videos and talks about all the things you can do once you get here and some of the things that you can expect when touring York County in this case, T K, South Carolina. We have an annual report. Again, this is something, another link that we can provide for you. Talks about our impact to the area, what we're bringing to the area and all the tax dollars that we're generating. One of our goals is to increase our current tax base. I'm really excited that I believe on the second, I received your letter, Merrily, Mayor O'Neil, in regards to being appointed to the Economic Development Commission, so I'm really excited about that. So not only are we invested from a business standpoint, but I'm invested as a citizen as well. Who we are and some of our services, again, we market the county and of course, the city as well. Group tours, leisure travelers, sports is a big niche. And I think everyone has been reading the papers, there are several sports entities that are trying to come into our city, whether it's indoor sports facilities and of course, the park, the Gatawa Park that we are so graciously would love to have, you know, be developed in the area because I think it's going to be a catalyst for just future earnings and tons of opportunities for the citizens and people coming to visit alike. These are our municipality sheets. What you see in front of you on this television screen is our economic impact. In the 16 fiscal year, we are working on our 17 fiscal year numbers. But in regards to sports and golf, we're looking at over a $600,000 economic impact, both direct and indirect to the city. With the golf numbers, it's really interesting. A lot of folks don't realize this, but what we do is we contract with Golf Packages of South Carolina in the clubhouse. And what we do is we go to golf shows, whether it's Columbus, DC, Pennsylvania, Vancouver, Toronto. We go to all those markets because what happens is these golfers are two different ways. They're either going to the coast to play golf, so we are usually sometimes a stopover, or we are a destination, so we put together packages that way. In the 16 fiscal year, we booked over 170 rounds of golf, which equates to almost $12,000 in direct impact to the T K Golf Club as well. And that's a nice number. Again, you know, we might be doing a better job of telling that story, but we're really proud of that number and we're looking to increase that tenfold because to have, you know, 27 holes on one of the few golf courses in a region like that, you need to take advantage of it and it's a great golf course. Now, my game is not the greatest, but I enjoy, you know, chipping up a little bit, so. Okay. And again, this just talks about some of the golf aspects and the sports aspects of it. Now, we technically have not had, in fiscal years 2016, we have a lot of overflow that comes in the city of T K. So what happens is through surveys, whether it's an event in Fort Mill or even Rock Hill or even on the Carrington Boulevard area, what happens is people come to this area to eat. Not staying yet because we don't have a hotel yet, but, you know, in due time. But as far as eating, prepared food, the hospitality taxes, that's what generates those revenues. And based on those events, we do over 50 events a year from a sports aspect, but we equate it to 14 of those events had reasonable overflow due to the surveys that we conducted with people attending our events. We had over 70,000 people for sports events in the fiscal year of 2016 and over 5,000 of those people have, were within the city of T K in regards to golf and sporting events, whether the sporting event was here in the city or not, still making sure they were eating here, going to Walmart, prepared foods and all those kinds of things. And that's where you see that almost $600,000 figure in far as a direct economic impact to the city. I will say this, I am 1,000% positive that that number will just triple. At the very least, once we get our own facilities built, whether it's like a Gatawa Park or it's the future capability of something like a game one facility, which is the indoor complex, the proposal of that. Once T K has its own state-of-the-art facility, I mean, we're going to find ourselves in a bit of a race between other communities, not only in South Carolina, but we're going to be competing against Georgia, North Carolina, Tennessee and Virginia. And that's a good thing to have. In our office, that's what we're designed to do. We're designed to sell the area, promote the area and show people like the United... We're designed to sell the area, promote the area and show people like the United States Olympic Committee, AAU, the NCAA. These are the organizations that we have built relationships with and are trying to bring into our community. Some of the activities we promote, again, this is just showing people that, hey, this is who we are, this is what we have to offer, and that's what people want to do. When you go to travel somewhere, you don't really care about the state, the county or the city, you just want to go and have a good time. And that's what we want to promote to this area is when you come here, you want to have a good time, and when you leave, the only thing we want you to do is tell somebody how great of a time you had, so you can come back and bring others back with you. Social media, we have a big presence on Facebook, obviously Twitter, Instagram, all those cool things. On Facebook, we have almost 30,000 fans on Facebook, so we're doing a pretty good job there. And I know Sandra Burress, our communications director, she does a good job of promoting all the festivals and all the parades and all the events that goes on in Tika K through our Facebook channel. I know some of the staffers take advantage of it there as far as communicating with Sandra and people on our staff in regards to getting the calendar, the events that we have in the city on our calendars of events page. On some of the Facebook posts right there. Marketing, there's several ways we market the city and the entire county. Number one is the visitors guide. That's kind of our go-all, be-all book, and that kind of gives people a good idea of who we are and what to do. Our app, I assume that everyone in this room probably has downloaded our free Visit York County app. It's an eat, stand, play app. It's really cool. You can put in there what kind of food you want, where you want to stay, some of the things you want to do, enter the GPS to the to the location. I use it because sometimes I forget what we have in town and some of the things that we can do, especially when I have family in town. So it's a really cool app, it's done really well. And, you know, this generation, that's what it's about now. It's all about apps, what kind of app you have on your phone. Of course, this is our visityourcounty.com website. And our newest project, which was released earlier this year, is our relocation guide. We have found, and I believe every citizen in Tika K knows this, but we have people moving here, like, I swear, like, I mean, just hundreds at a time. And I notice because it now takes me 10 minutes to get down to the light, you know. But but I will say, we'd never really had a one-stop shop of how to get information or people requesting information about our area. So we have come up with a relocation guide. It has received rave reviews, people like it. We also have a detailed roadmap with that as well. Now, you think with technology and everything that goes into it, people are like, who are using roadmaps? Well, people are still using roadmaps. That's probably the only thing we charge for, we charge $2 for the map, but the realtors alone, they love the relocation guide. We have all the information there in regards to transportation, education, of course, all the municipalities within the county, things about the county, testimonials from different city and county leaders, and we're really excited and proud of that. Now, our office is funded through hospitality tax for the county and a couple of entities as well as the city of Rock Hill and the town of Fort Mill. And for us to continue to do the things that we want to do and to really not only continue it, but to really grow it, we are just, you know, trying to get more participation from, you know, our other areas outside of really just the county aspect. Charlie and I have talked about it a little bit, and we're really excited to to grow Tika K, to partner with you guys. Again, as a as a personal citizen, I'm invested, I feel like the office is invested, our board of commissioners are invested, 15 of them. It is interesting we have 15 bosses because everybody has 15 different ideas. Probably you guys have a little bit worse because you got the whole city of Tika K on your back. But but we're excited to grow Tika K. We also excited to adhere to any concerns or ideas that you may have, that you may want to see that Visit York County can do for the city even more. Our office, our doors are always open, and we look forward to working with you and wanted to say thank you again for the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. And that's all I really have today.
Well, thank you, Alvis. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Alvis.
All right, thank you.
All right, and I'm gonna try that app here.
I hope so, yeah, it's free, by the way, it's free.
If it's free, it's for me.
It's free. All right, thank you.
Item number two B, TK Fire Department, recognition of Toys for Happiness Drive. Chief Smansky.
I want to take the time and recognize one group in TK, they go by the name of the Cartaholics. These guys and women are phenomenal. Every year, I'm overwhelmed by the amount of toys we get. One day a year, drive up to clubhouse, take a truck, fill it up with toys. This year, we took a pickup truck, a truck, and then we had to come back and get some more. It's just phenomenal. We collected, I think, right at 14 bikes and I don't know how many stuffed animals and stuff. We take it down and we give it to the Toys for Happiness, WGR, Manny Kimball is a big part of that, and they have a gym filled with all these toys and bikes. You think you're, it's down in Rock Hill, you just can't, I can't explain it. And every year, we get told that we bring more than anybody, and it's such a great feeling. So these people need to be recognized because after that day, they still bring toys and stuff up to us the next couple of weeks after that. And I just got three toys last week, Friday, as I was walking out the door. So it's a nonstop thing, it's all year long. Plus, a lot of people bring goodies for the firemen, as you can tell. So, I mean, it's just great. So I'd like to call Alan Keever up. Alan and I go way back to when someone wanted to know your phone number, you just say 4735. Just give them the last four because everything else was straight. Thank you, Alan, thanks for all you do for us, it's great.
Turn around, take a picture. Alan, tell us how this all got started. I know, I told you I'd get you to speak. You got three minutes.
Thanks, chief. I guess it's been about five or six years ago, maybe closer to seven, we started golf cart poker runs here in Tika K, just as a social for for our for our citizens to enjoy. And we actually did this, started the December one, we always would do Toys for the Children. So it started out with 33 people, and I think the last one was 234. So it grew handsomely, so. But the people really enjoy it, they enjoy giving to the children, and we enjoy using it and going through the fire department. And chief does a great job for us. We thank him also.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Item number three, public comments. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we close public comments. Item number four is approval of minutes. Special council meeting of January 2nd. Any changes, additions, deletions to the minutes? Since only two of us were here then. Hearing none, the minutes stand as as written. Item number five, five A is election of mayor pro tem. And I'd like to do the honors if I could. I'd like to make a motion to elect Heather Overman to be our next mayor pro tem.
Second.
I have a second from Alicia Dash. Any comments? Any comments from the seating gallery there? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. I already made a motion. I will here to take a vote. All in favor of saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, 40-0. Congratulations. Item number five B, resolution to adopt local rules of of order and city council proceedings. Per code, the city council must follow Robert's Rules of Order when conducting their meetings. Code also allows for city council to adopt local rules of procedure should they desire. In addition to Robert's Rules of Order, the attached rules are the basic rules that council has followed for the past several years. I have made a motion to make one significant change, that we adopt a new, we adopt a new rule, the change specifies that there will be a call for public comments prior to each vote taken by the city council. Unlike the public comments period listed on agendas, on the agenda, which is limited to three minutes, these comments are limited to one minute. So right before we take a vote, we're going to allow public comments, people come up, that's one change, a significant change. But any questions?
I have a question there.
Yes, ma'am.
Upon approval of of this motion, does that go into effect this meeting?
Yes, it does.
All right, thanks.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt local rules of order for city council proceedings.
I have a motion by Heather Overman. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ryan Richard. Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Since it'll be the first time you ever get to do it. You can make history right now. Hearing none of the questions? All in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Wow, we're doing the unanimous thing again. Okay, we're on, planning commission, do we want to wait for the planning commission to come out and just drive on? We're ready, okay.
Yes, sir, they've already taken the vote and Susan is prepared to present their recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. While Mr. Leonard's continuing with workshop, he asked me to give this recommendation. A motion was made to defer action for one month on this this amendment so that the planning commission then could vet language regarding privacy versus a minimum spacing between pickets such as one and a half to two inches, to some language regarding natural colors are limiting, to natural colors are limiting vinyl to either black or white only. So at this time, that would be their recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Susan. So let me make a motion to table this for one month, and we'll take this up again and city count, or the the planning commission then will bring us another recommendation, and this time, we hope it'll be the final recommendation.
So just to make sure, and for the record, you are asking for, you are seeking a a motion to table item five D?
Great.
Second.
I have a second from Ryan Richard. Any questions, comments? Any comments from the audience? Hearing none, call to motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no, it's unanimous again. We're on five E now? Correct, Charlie, you keeping keeping score at home? We're on five E? Let me get to five E real fast. Okay, item number five E, Drake Gardendale LLC, developer of Lake Ridge Community, has submitted a request for the city to adopt the streets as listed below, and it will be read in the in the motion, into its inventory. Staff has verified that each of the streets, sections of streets requested for adoption has either met or exceeded the necessary minimum build-out of 75%. The streets have been inspected by the city engineer and the city staff, and they do meet city standards. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I will consider a motion.
Motion to approve the street acceptance within the Gardendale-Lake Ridge subdivision to include sections of Larkspur Way, Blue Bell Way and Selandine Way, as shown by record map, Gardendale Phase One, Pod A, Map Four, entirety of Fuchsia Court, remainder of Betany Lane and Larkspur Way, as shown by record map, Gardendale Phase One, Pod A, Map Six, remainder of Amaranth, Amaranth Drive entirely, entirety of Marjoram Way and Jacinta Court, as shown by record map, Gardendale Phase Two, Pod E, Map One, entirety of Arnica Court, S.
You wanted this one, okay.
Courts, shown by record map, Gardendale Phase Two, Pod E, Map Two, section of Forsythia Lane and Zinnia Way, as shown by record map, Gardendale Phase Two, Pod H, Map One, and remainder of Zinnia Way, as shown by record map, Gardendale Phase Two, Pod H, Map Two.
Second.
Would you repeat that, please?
Sure.
I have a I have a motion by Alicia Dash. Do I have a second?
Second.
Saying by Heather Overman. Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none? All in favor, please signify by signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Item five F, rolling right along here. Ah, the water tower. The water towers owned by the city have required maintenance stipulated by South Carolina DEHAC. These items include annual inspections, periodic washouts of the tanks and interior exterior painting. All of these items not only help with water quality provided by our customers, provided to our customers, they also aid in extending the life of the tanks. The shoreline tank is almost 20 years old, and the clubhouse tank is approximately 30 years old. Quotes were received for the enclosed referenced service by SCI, and they provided the most favorable terms. The cost of the service is included in the annual TKD budget. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the water tank maintenance agreement and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
A motion by Ryan Richard, second by Alicia Dash. Are there any public comments or questions? Basically, this is a maintenance agreement for our two water towers, to put it in the simplest of terms, to include painting. The painting would be on its own about $130,000 or so, per tower, higher than that.
And up, yes.
And up. And this company has agreed to put us a little logo out there on the blue tower if we so desire, like a golf ball or something like that, or a picture of the mayor, something like that. That was Ryan's idea, not mine. A picture of the mayor when he was 20, maybe, or something like that. So, but what is the cost of a painting of a tower, about 150? So this maintenance agreement is a pretty good deal. How do they even do that for this price? Okay, I have a motion by Ryan Richard and a second by Alicia Dash. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous again. Let's go to five G. Right, five G. Get to G, Dave. Okay, the Board of Directors for MAC Municipal Association of South Carolina, met in the fall of 2017 to determine the advocacy initiatives for 2018 that the MAC would like to take on. MAC is advocating for the following, encouraging business growth and development, providing quality services, increasing funding for law enforcement, expanding funding sources for infrastructure and reducing blight. MAC has requested that all 271 cities around the state support these initiatives via the attached resolution. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the South Carolina Municipal Association's 2018 advocacy initiatives.
I have a motion by Alicia Dash. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous again. I have to say, that was very good reading of that one, that was excellent. I'm gonna have to go back and watch that on YouTube later on. All right, move now to item six, the city manager's report. Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First thing, just want to remind everyone about the polar plunge coming up February 3rd. God bless them for jumping in the lake with the temperatures we've had. 9:00 AM registration begins, anybody and everybody can participate. 10:30, they're doing a costume and spirit contest, 11:00 AM lunch, and at noon, they're taking the plunge. I understand from our assistant city manager, Katie Paulson, the neighborhoods in the TKK Connect program are trying to get a little competition to see which neighborhoods can raise the most money, a little good-natured rivalry there. All of this, for those that aren't aware, all of this is a fundraiser for Area 11 Special Olympics. Last year, I think they raised right around $15,000, the most they had ever raised out of the polar plunge. If you've ever met Chief Parker, that's now the floor, so it's got to be more than that every year. So looking forward to that and hopefully folks can donate. Again, there's all kinds of information on our website for that. The last thing I have for my report tonight, as council may recall, and I realize this happened prior to this council beginning, an application was made for, to the RFATs group for funding for a sidewalk on Windjammer. It was using God share funds as well as some tap, transportation enhancement funds. And, you know, some sizable amount, a sizable amount was approved, but it would be, if we were to move forward, it would be an SC DOT project, managed project. The city would not be managing it, the city would not be designing it. Obviously, the city would have input on it. As we have walked that with their, with RFATs as well as DOT officials, their recommendation, and is why I bring this to y'all tonight, because it will not do the entire street from TK Drive to the park. The most bang for the buck, as far as the funds that are approved right now, would be to start at TK Drive where the golf cart crossing is and go down Windjammer to approximately Palau Court, basically is where it would end. I have seen on social media that, you know, there's some on Windjammer that do not like it. There's lots of people that don't live on Windjammer that would like to get to the park that do like it. What RFATS and DOT has asked is, are we, do, does the city want to move forward? Because I will have to amend the application, which I said is not a big deal. Does City Council have a desire to move forward with the sidewalk on Windjammer? Or would Council be more inclined for us to make application to shift those funds, or request to shift those funds to a sidewalk in some other location? The two biggest needs that have been identified and discussed, at least for the 17 years that I have been here, are on Mulcahy and on Point Clear. Obviously, we've already done a sidewalk partially on Mulcahy from TK Drive up to the Clubhouse. This funding should be able to take it from there, at least to the first Tannity Circle, and potentially on around. Obviously, we'd want to end it at an intersection and not just a mid-street point type thing. Point Clear, there are no sidewalks. The issue we run, we're gonna run into no matter where we are in traditional TK, is everybody's front property lines come all the way out to the curb. So wherever we put this, whether it's on Windjammer or on Point Clear or on Mulcahy or some other street in traditional TK, you're either gonna have to, we're going to have to obtain easements from folks across their front yard for a sidewalk. Actually, it's two easements. We'd have to do a temporary construction easement plus a permanent pedestrian easement for the sidewalks. It's, the funding does not include purchasing those easements. And for every one that we have to purchase, that sidewalk gets shorter and shorter and shorter. So again, before DOT and the RFATS group begins heading down this pathway any further, they wanted some type of yea or nay type thing from Council. I'm bringing it to y'all tonight in my manager's report. Basically, looking for some directions on what, for some direction which I would like to see.
Is there any scenario where some of those funds could be used? Let's say, you know, Councilwoman Stalford, before she had left, one of her focuses was trying to get the sidewalk, where was it? It was right across the street from City Hall, from the parking lot at the beginning of the walking trail over. And then, and I don't know how the funds are required to be used, but to me, we've had a lot of conversation about increasing the safety of our crosswalks across TK Drive. Is there, I'm sure there's restrictions on the way the money could be spent.
There is. And I've actually got a meeting set up. The prior DOT Director for our district actually just retired. And I have reached out to the traffic engineers working to set up a meeting about our crosswalks on TK Drive. This funding couldn't go towards those. It has to, it has to be sidewalk oriented. Sidewalks are bike lanes, both of which, anywhere in this area, are gonna require acquisition of easements. Yeah, so again, nine times out of 10, you're probably not gonna have somebody that's just gonna say, "Yeah, sure, you can have six feet, seven feet of my front yard."
Use it or lose it, money.
Correct.
What kind of dollar amount are we looking at?
It was around $300,000, something like that. And we had to put up some... We had, we had about a $90,000 match, $90,000 and change. Total, total all-in was, I think with our matching funds, it put it right in the $400,000 range. You had $300,000 plus that were coming from the God Share and TEP funds. And then when you added our match onto it, it puts you right in that $400,000 range.
And we're fully budgeted for the $90,000 required match?
No, Council would have to approve that match before we move forward.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the easements would also, that would increase the 90,000, does not include easements, right?
Oh, no, ma'am. No, I mean, if easements had to be purchased or obtained, that would come out of the project fund. So basically, you've got one pot of money, and it can either go entirely towards the construction of it, or some of it's gonna have to, would have to go towards acquiring easements, which then would reduce how much construction's getting done. There's one set of funds for it, or one dollar figure right now that is approved for it.
How was Windjammer selected as the project? That's my first question. And then, secondly, what kind of timeframe are we looking at in order to, before these funds would be reallocated elsewhere if we didn't make a decision?
The, RFATS folks haven't given me an exact timeframe. They want to move forward cautiously. You know, so, I mean, if we needed to bring this for an official-type discussion, vote-type thing, if that's what Council's looking for. Probably by end of February, they're gonna be wanting to make decisions. I don't, Mayor, I don't know that, you've not, they haven't met yet since you've been. So you've, he'll have a meeting coming up the end of this month with the RFATS community. I can obviously go back to them tomorrow to see how far we can extend this out. They're not chomping at the bit, but I don't know that they're gonna give us, you know, six months to figure it out. I mean, they want to know what, you know, what we want to do sooner rather than later. To go back to your first question, how was Windjammer selected? I'll be honest, Windjammer, Point Clear, and Mulcahy have been discussed for sidewalks in traditional TK since I started with the city. Why Windjammer first? That was where I was told to make application for, from our previous mayor who was on the RFATS community. Yeah, we have a lot of people that try to bike and walk down to Windjammer. It's one of our most popular parks. Sidewalk makes great sense. Folks that I talked to as we were walking it don't mind the idea of a sidewalk. They just minded on their side of the road.
Everybody wants it over there.
Windjammer is a very tight, windy road.
Lot of parking pads, a lot of short driveways that would be lost.
So is Mulcahy and Point Clear for that.
Right, right.
Have we ever, have we ever conducted some sort of study or evaluation in terms of what types of conditions and develop some sort of rating scale? I mean, in terms of which roads or projects are selected first for funding if we do have sidewalks?
For roads? Absolutely.
For sidewalks.
For sidewalks? No. Because, well, we always, we have a policy in place where we don't want to just put a sidewalk to just nowhere.
Right.
Yeah, we want to connect neighborhoods to businesses, neighborhoods to parks. That's what we want, our, you know, that is the sole priority purpose for our trails and the urban trail sidewalks, if you will, which is why we targeted the sidewalk going up Mulcahy to get that pedestrian access up to the Clubhouse. It's why we had applied for and received funds through RFATS to do the sidewalk that goes to the Marina, to give folks an opportunity that are living down in the Chelsea Day areas of town to be able to walk up to Rundy Park, get on that walking trail there, be able to cross the crosswalk and get on our main walking trail. So that's what we have identified. You know, Windjammer makes perfect sense because of Windjammer Park. But Windjammer on both sides of the road, just depending on what section you are, provides a lot of topographical challenges. You've got some cliffs. As the mayor was mentioning, you've got parking pads, you've got some very short driveways that do cause, cause issues. Point Clear, we, we've been getting requests from there, a lot of, because of a few curves and corners through there. Realistically, it would just be working to try to get folks from that street up to the, I'll call it the traffic circle at Windward, to be able to get on the sidewalk there, gives them pedestrian, safe pedestrian access, hopefully to the park and the rest of the trail system. So it's not just a, let's put a sidewalk just somewhere because that street doesn't have one. It's, does it get them to the trail system to where they can then, you know, bike to the next place? You know, we always try to look at it from a standpoint of, can you get on a bike, get on a trail at point X and be, how far can you go? Yeah, and then where's that gap? As far as our roads and things like that, yes, we conduct an annual rating on those as far as which ones we're targeting for resurfacing and things of that nature. But with the sidewalks, it's trying to connect destination points, as funding allows for.
Now, is there any scenario where the money, say, could be split between, let's say, that parking lot over to Memorial Gardens? And then the opposite side over, because I know it got shot down a few years back with the sidewalk from that Turner Field area down towards Seven Coves?
Yeah. It is absolutely something that we can discuss with them. Yeah, as I stated at the beginning, the application...
Wasn't it?
It was an easement issue, yes. DOT's right away, they needed, it was a construction easement, temporary construction easement issue. There were some folks in that area that didn't want some of the trees coming down, didn't want, you know, heavy equipment in their backyard, so to speak. I think there's a swimming pool behind two of them now. They weren't real wild about that. So that's why it ended at Turner Field. But the idea was to give folks at Harren Harbor, Amber Woods, you know, opportunity to be able to come down as well as get to other identified crosswalks on TK Drive to be able to safely get across to, over to our trail system. But as far as whether this funding can be split between the two projects, it's definitely a question I'll have to ask, since we have to amend the application anyway if we're not gonna do it at Windjammer, can most certainly answer that question.
Well, it's the easement was the, was the big funding part. So on Windjammer, going from Lake, from TK Drive gets us down to the first four-way stop sign.
To Palau, yes, sir.
Okay, that doesn't, that doesn't really give anybody access to the, to the park.
No, sir.
And then doing it from reverse, starting at the park and coming back, I think it would get, I think silver gold...
Kiwi.
Oh, is that, so that really, that's not even a block.
Up the hill and around the corner just a little bit.
Because the easements would be so expensive there. So it, again, it does nothing. It's so expensive down there.
I'm thinking from, you know, I know the guys now have a, have a neighbor that works for the city that could talk to his neighbors to help out a little bit there.
But if we did Mulcahy, we really wouldn't have to take anybody's property because we're just going down to Tannity.
For the most part, you'd be on city property. There may be one or two private properties, but it's a very, very minimal
And that wouldn't be much.
Impact, at least going on...
And if we had any extra money left over, could we do what we call the Stalford Sidewalk? For lack of better words.
I will, I will check with Christopher Herman and David Hooper with RFATS.
That was $15,000, wasn't it, or something like that, or $20,000 at the most?
That was lowering the hill, the trail was gonna be about 15 grand with the retaining wall and...
But if we went in front of the, if we went along the road, remember what that price was?
That one, I don't know that we ever got it. I'd have to check with him.
It didn't seem like he was as much as lowering the hill and all that other stuff.
It was somewhere in that $10,000 neighborhood, yes.
So that wouldn't be anything. I mean, Ryan could pay for that out of his excess money, I mean, cash reserve.
I mean, sorry, are you finished?
Yeah.
I guess from my perspective, I think that I would be interested in, I guess, directing staff if Mayor and Council agreed to do some sort of quantitative or qualitative analysis in terms of what are all of the options that we have? I think that sidewalks are great. I love the idea of connecting neighborhoods to parks and schools and all that kind of stuff. And I think that there are a lot of great options. And I think that there's only a limited amount of dollars. So making sure that we're using those in the most effective, like, like you said, we don't want, you know, if we can't make it all the way from the main drive to Windjammer, is that really the most effective and efficient way for us to use those funds? I mean, I haven't heard anyone talk about the other side of TK as well, Damn Road. That's, you know, right there, you've got a ton of neighborhoods back there, and you have commercial, and, you know, what are our options there for providing some sort of sidewalk to connect those neighborhoods?
We had applied a couple of years ago, just since you brought up that one, just for reference. We did apply, it's probably three years ago, maybe four, for these same funds to connect from Stonecrest Boulevard going down Damn Road to where Corbel is. And it was denied. Pretty certain it was denied because there were other projects that they felt were more valuable at the time or rated higher. But we did apply for that one because ultimately, that is actually where we do have a gap, so to speak, in connectivity from a sidewalk-trail standpoint. So biggest thing I wanted to try to get from Council tonight, and I absolutely agree, bringing back funding, you know, options, what, what those potentials are, absolutely. Didn't want to go that route. If I came in here tonight and everybody said, "Yeah, we want to do Windjammer down to Palau", okay, then I can fill out that application and boom, it's off and going. If that's not the direction that Council wants to go, then I can definitely bring you back options.
Bring back options, options.
Most certainly. Yeah, and amount of citizens it affects.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, what'd you say, Dave? It's 40?
It's, if we, well, I just thought if we went all the way down to the park, it was 17 people on the right side, and then coming back out, it was really four, if we're just talking about parking pads or driveways. Now, that doesn't mean yards. It affects everybody's yards.
Right.
It affects everybody's shrubbery, trees, that kind of thing. I didn't count those. I know, I just heard everybody about, "I'm not, you're not taking my parking pad", especially the closer you get to the park. That's what really seems to bottleneck.
Not just even about easements, but so is Windjammer Park our most frequent, you know, frequently visited area? Or would it make more sense to bring it to Mulcahy since we have so many events at the Glenon Center and people are coming up from, you know, the back areas?
I think there's a lot of different...
Yeah, I think...
Can we sit here all night and talk about this?
And we have now, we're five minutes past my allotted time of doing this for one hour.
You're in your first meeting.
That's all I have for the City Manager's Report. I think I've got good direction. We'll bring, we'll bring, I will have conversations with the RFATS leaders. And I'll try to bring back options and solutions at your February meeting.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Item number 7 is Council Comments. We'll start with the illustrious Ryan Richard.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations. First, I'd like to say, I think it's awesome that the chief decided to recognize Allen and the Cartaholics for, like you said, five, six, seven years of a whole lot of toys, people in it, doing it for the right reasons, having a good time at the same time. I think, you know, as I said before, golf carts are an integral part of this community, makes it very desirable. And for everybody to get together, enjoy themselves for a good cause, be recognized for it. Thank you, Allen. Thank Kevin Forrest. We know you guys work hard on these events, and I think it's awesome. And lastly, I'll be quick. I think the mayor's suggestion for changing to adopt some local rules to give citizens the option to comment after council discussion or after discussion prior to a vote. It gives you guys the opportunity versus having to say something at the beginning of a meeting and sit here for two hours to see if anybody listened to anything you said. Now you have the opportunity to hear the arguments or the conversations, then say something on that specific subject prior to our vote. And I feel, as a council member, you sitting here just after we had the conversation and you say something that's impactful on the way that I feel or the way I think, just like Barbie did tonight, an impactful conversation or statement that could help determine or create more conversation amongst ourselves, I think is an awesome addition to the meeting format that we have now. So thank you, Dave, for bringing that up and incorporating into what we do. And aside from that, I'll shut up. Thanks for coming out, guys.
Alicia?
Well, I'd like to, again, congratulate Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem as well on, am I on? Yeah, okay. And Mayor Pro Tem on your serving in office and look forward to serving with you and Councilmember Richard. I would also like to remind people, inclement weather is coming, so please, please, please be careful going driving on the roads, go to the speed limit or stay home if possible. And then, you know, that Polar Plunge is coming, guys. And, you know, I don't know, I might, I might, it depends on what my fellow, you know, council members are...
I'll take a picture in front of the sign, that's it.
See, it's a fundraiser. I feel like if I jump in, it takes away... It's a fun, too. But I, you know, at my extended age now, I feel like you, the reason you're doing this is for money and not to see my half-nude body. So I will be donating a substantial amount of the mayor's, new mayor's pay. Is my mayor's pay in, in the bucket yet? I will donate my mayor's monthly salary if I don't have to go in. And I would like to know how many people from staff are going in. I would like to donate something substantial to every staff member, Spanky. I'll be, I'll be with EMS in case somebody needs assistance.
Okay, and lastly, I also want to thank the Keever, Allen, thank you. Thank you so much for all you do with the Cartaholics. I second what Ryan said, and he said it perfectly. So thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Mayor Pro Tem, Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate what David mentioned at the beginning of the meeting and that everybody keep their thoughts and prayers on the four officers, the York County officers that were shot and injured, yeah, last night. It's devastating news for our county, and so I hope that you will think of them in these next coming days and months. And then to echo Alicia, I just wanted to make sure that everybody stays safe. I'm happy that the city has already put some stuff down in the streets, but be careful out there and hopefully there's no school canceled. Oh, gosh, it is?
Fort Mill School District is canceled for tomorrow, so enjoy your time with your kids. They just announced.
So what's the city gonna do?
I'm actually, was just texting with Katie. City, city's offices will be on a two-hour delay, so we'll be opening up at 10:30.
And I'll be looking for a babysitter if anyone is willing.
I'm seconding that as well.
Anything else? Thank you. So our meeting is 10:30 tomorrow, then? We were gonna be at 9:30. We're now at 10:30. I just want to say the idea for the one-minute com- I just want to say, the idea for the one-minute comment came from a constituent.